I mean, the cameras are over there.
I have them on.
You weren't allowed to have fans.
No.
Fans cost you all that.
No.
So you weren't allowed to have fans?
No.
I know, in a way, I think, except because they can't like that has like we want anything in there. You have to talk to them.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Does that all right?
Where you going with your area?
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Set me up for a long summer vacation.
Well.
Call me in order to find out allegiance.
one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Report of any executive session?
No.
Public comment?
Go ahead.
Good morning, Laura.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Laura Prisniewski from the People's Democratic City of Pottsville, Pennsylvania. In after World War II, a minister was asked how the Nazis came to power. And what he said is, they first came to round up the communists, and we didn't say anything or do anything because it didn't affect us. Next, they came to round up the socialists, and we didn't say or do anything because it didn't seem to affect us. Then they came to round up the Jews, and we didn't say anything or do anything because it didn't seem to affect us. And then they came to round us up, and there was no one to speak up for us. Politically, we look very much like Nazi Germany in the early stages of becoming a communist country. Socially, we look like the collapse of Rome. We are no longer the land of the free and the home of the brave. We are more the land of the deceived and the home of the enslaved. The average American is paying approximately 60% of their income to taxes, hidden taxes, actual taxes. You're just taxed to death. A lot of people can no longer afford to live. Silence in the face of the things that are going on is absolutely deadly.
Any other public comment?
Gave yous a week off last week.
I missed you.
I missed you too. Put that in the minutes, please. Jeff Donco Palo Alto, just gonna keep beating the dead horse here. Mr. Hatter, three and a half months, paid to work from home. Apparently, he was here last week with his briefcase in the commissioner's office. Just wanna see if you guys have any updates on where we stand, how the investigation's going, and if it's actually being looked into, or is he just gonna be shuffled back in the office? Also, Lisa Stevens, that investigation, is there an update on that? As far as I can remember, for four years I've been coming to meetings, I've never seen her here to address the board once. So I'm not sure why she has that position when she never has to show up. Carla or Lisa or somebody else is always here representing her. Why can't she ever show up at a meeting? Boggles my mind. Is the nepotism policy done yet? Seems like, according to the state, which I'm working on getting actual documentation and filing a complaint, Boots did violate it by voting for his brother's farm, although the solicitor's office says otherwise, but it's a blatant violation. And also, with Ann Dudish's investigation, it was recommended that the county get one. I guess we're just gonna sit on our hands until there's another violation and a lawsuit on that. Also, salary board public comment policy, I've been waiting for months for that. I got yelled at, chastised, told to shut up and sit down when I bring something up that's not salary board, but there's no policy to say otherwise. That's been being worked on for two to three months now. Had a very interesting conversation last week when I got home with some employees here, when I was out for dinner one night. They said that they, the leader of their office, whoever's in charge, they need a typewriter for the office. They can't get one. They said it's not in the budget, so these people have to handwrite everything. So, we pay $1.8 million for George, pay astronomical amounts for everything else in this place, consultants, lawyers, everything else, and we can't get a damn typewriter for these people. So if I have to start a GoFundMe to get a typewriter for this office, I will, and it'll embarrass the hell out of yous. And I wanna see till next week if any three of yous are that in touch with your employees and the county and the offices to see which office needs this typewriter, because we'll see if the typewriter's on the agenda next week. But I guarantee ya, none of yous are gonna reach out and figure out which one it is. And in closing, I brought up the soup kitchen last week. I appreciate you guys writing a letter of support. I did send over the information for yous, I appreciate that. Is there anything else that we could do on a county level to make this not happen? We're down to 42 days until it's scheduled to shut down. It's 100 people a day plus that are losing a meal, a place to warm up, a place to cool down, a place to charge their devices, a place just to socialize. We have veterans, shut-ins that get meals delivered, families that come in for diapers for their kids, baby formula. Sharon and them did the coat drive, the blanket drive. There's a lot more than just soup. Soup's never really even served there, to be honest with you. But I see other places, other counties, they had food pantries and soup kitchens, and they're being able to use ARPAs. I know you guys sat on a lot of ARPAs. Can we sit down and discuss something to see if we can make this happen? I reached out on behalf of Dustin's. We're willing to either purchase the building, try to keep it going somehow. I did talk to Father Rogers, but Catholic charities and stuff, it fell in deaf ears. I'm asking the county if you guys can sit down in the next week and try to come up with a resolution to keep this going forward, to keep the soup kitchen open. Thank you.
Senator Wright, for the record, I did not vote to preserve a farm. I voted to put a subsidy contract with the state.
It's still a violation. I checked out with the state. I sent everything documented that you have on your agenda. It doesn't matter if he directly benefited from it at that point, or if the survey goes through and he benefits, it's a direct violation because in essence, he will benefit from it. So your solicitors need to look into it a little better because I sent everything to the state, and trust me, once I get it in writing, then we'll see what happens. But you're in violation, and it's the second time you're in violation.
Yeah.
I know better than them.
Any other public comment?
George Stankovich from Palo Alto. Once again, I'm here for, on behalf of senior citizens and veterans, I hope and pray that what I said last week hit home to some of these people in our county, especially the ones that are in politics, any politician, it's time to wake up. This world is in bad shape, and the United States, even though we're supposedly the number one nation in the world, we're not taking care of people that work their whole lives, paying into the system, and are still losing their homes. And with this new assessment, and I guarantee you, and they can't guarantee me, that there's gonna be more people that are gonna lose their homes because of this reassessment. They're saying one-third is gonna be lowered, one-third stays the same, and one-third's gonna be higher. And I guarantee you, I'll be knocking on somebody's door the first day I find out what lie, and it better go down. I'm tired of paying these taxes. It's nonsense. It's nonsense. And all they do is just throw it out the window or in their own pockets. I'm tired of this. Politicians have to wake up. Don't tell me the economy is getting better. Yeah, maybe better for them because they're making $100,000, $200,000, or $1 million a year. They're not getting a set income of under $25,000. $40-some thousand is poverty level. Wake up. Wake up. It's time to wake up. I'm tired of being up here and spilling this. I have senior citizens, they don't even know about the program. Thank you for trying to do what you're doing, Jeff, with the kitchen. I think that it's time that these people start waking up. And I know there's a lot of farmers, good farmers, I know that Mr. Hess here does some good things too. But it's time for everybody to wake up. These billionaires that get away with, and I should say billionaires in our county, that get away with murder. They're not paying their fair share. There shouldn't be a school tax worry about school tax. They could dig in their own pockets and pay most of this off, but they won't. They're letting their own citizens of Schuylkill County suffer. I'm tired of this. I hate seeing people being thrown out of their homes. I don't know what's wrong with everybody else, but I hate seeing that. And I'm the only one, 99% of the time, up here speaking about this. This is nuts. I mean, come on. This is life and death. People coming up to me and asking me for money. If I have the money, I'm gonna give it to you, but I just don't have the money to do that. I hope and pray somebody wakes up and sees this situation. Veterans not getting there, I know what you're gonna say to me, there's places to go. And I've heard from a lot of them that they went to these places and they were turned down, turned down a serviceman that served this country. That is ridiculous. I'm tired of it. Don't give me any excuses. I don't wanna hear them. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Melinda Diver at North Mannheim Township. Let's get to it. Great job, guys, giving public comment, and Laura. Absolutely. If you don't think that reassessment is gonna be a reelection issue for every single commissioner sitting there, you better get ready. So Larry, even if you vote not to certify it, as you have said over and over again that you will not certify the reassessment, I think you're counting on your compadres sitting there on either side of ya, that they're gonna certify it. So, get ready.
If they don't, they don't. It's their choice to vote yes or no. It's my choice to vote yes or no, and it's their choice to vote yes or no.
So it is absolutely gonna be a reelection issue. We will write it all the way to the election. Get ready. Okay, couple topics. When has the meeting been scheduled with the people out in the West End?
To what? A meeting with them or to go out to the things? I talked to them last week about going out.
Who? Who'd you talk to?
Wendy.
About?
Coming out to tour the places.
Okay, I thought you were gonna have a meeting with the West Enders. So Dave, please like subtract the seconds whenever Larry is speaking and I'm not. Okay, for my three minutes.
I'm just gonna be answering the questions in front of the answer though.
Okay, I'm wanting to make sure I get my three minutes because I got some topics to cover. You absolutely stated that you would be having a meeting with the West Enders out there after you had your meeting with the polluters, NSP, Liberty Soils, et cetera, and DEP. Actually, those meetings should have been open to the public as well, because anytime you have a majority of the commissioners, which would be two commissioners, and if all three commissioners were present at these meetings, that should have been open to the public. Anytime you're discussing county business, those meetings should be open to the public, but somehow, we're just gonna keep it all quiet and do it behind closed doors. We really do not know what was discussed at those meetings. So, okay, let's see. When are you gonna have this meeting with the West Enders to discuss everything with them? Okay, can't spend all my three minutes on that. Let's talk about interns, unpaid versus paid interns in this county. I went back and checked, from January to the present time, we have seven, seven unpaid interns, and only one measly paid intern. Do you guys realize that? Why did you guys vote to pay Heather Garrity's daughter? And I feel bad, I really don't wanna bring the daughter into it, but you know what? She's out there. You did not mention her name when you approved her $12-an-hour salary. You never mentioned her name when you voted on that. Go back and check the meeting. You said, okay, are we gonna approve the Office of Senior Services intern position, which you all voted to approve that for $12-an hour? What about, okay.
Give her some more minutes.
Yes.
Calm down. It's all right, calm down. You got an extra minute if you want. Want to calm down?
What about those other seven interns? We are talking sheriff's office, EMA, the district attorney's office, children and youth, and the public defender's office, all had unpaid interns approved.
Okay.
What are they, chopped liver?
It's the position they applied for.
Wait, I didn't, I didn't realize, was there an open position for a paid intern in Office of Senior Services? Give me that.
Yes.
There are interns, yeah. We do.
Paid?
Paid, yes.
They've always had in senior services.
Yeah.
Only senior services? Okay. Is this being paid with taxpayer dollars, or is it a special program that they are being paid with state funds or federal funds?
It's our funding.
Through state and federal funding?
With state funding, yes.
Okay, get, get me that. Get me that, get me that information. Because I have a feeling these other poor kids who are working for $0-an hour might be interested to see, is there any sort of funding that might be available to them so that they can get, heck, I don't know, $5, $10-an hour? Because right now, they're making nothing. Is that fair?
The person applied for it and they knew that it was unpaid, isn't that on them?
Okay, so that, those positions were, those positions were advertised.
They were not, they were not advertised.
Oh!
Yes, we have.
Oh, so how does anybody know about them, then? How can other kids?
Well, how do they know about the other ones in the other offices?
Yeah.
I, I.
They're unpaid, Larry!
Then how do they know to apply for them if nobody knows about them?
If someone goes to an elected official or an appointed official and says, can I do an unpaid internship? Or can, do you have any internships? And then they say, yeah, we have them, but they're all unpaid. So if you wanna work that, it's unpaid, just so you know. You can, you can plop that down on your resume, but you're not gonna have any financial gain at the end of all of that.
That's it, that's up. Okay? I'll look into it, Melinda. I just, there's been internships in the county.
Unpaid, unpaid. They've all.
There's been paid interns before it happened.
People are going to school and they want to apply like what they learned in our office.
This is a high school kid, right?
Yeah.
Abigail. High school kid. Not even in college yet, right?
She wants the experience to be able to have that for when she goes to college.
To major in?
It's occupational therapy, but it can be applied to what she's doing.
And that position, again, Deanna, was not advertised, right?
No.
Okay, thanks. Thank you for that. Got it.
You're welcome. Any other public comment? Let's move on to the evening. Due information.
I'm requesting authorization of a space-available agreement between the county of Schuylkill through its board of commissioners with its office in Pottsville, PA, and the Central County's Youth Center and its governing board, which has an office in Belfa, Pennsylvania. The term of the agreement shall be for one year and should be effective July 1st, 2024, and continue until June 30th, 2025. The standard per diem rate for the detention space for each juvenile shall be $595 per day.
Human services?
I have one item, a recommendation that the board of commissioners approves a program-funded agreement with Schuylkill Community Action in Pottsville, Pennsylvania for outreach case management services for the period July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025, with a contract cap of $38,432.
Thank you. Grant Magers?
Good morning, commissioners. Today, I do need to remove the very first motion. Approval of a contract for $6,500 with M&amp;L Associates for preparation of a home American Rescue Plan application. Approval of change order number one to extend a contract with Tribet Contracting Company, Inc., for a CBBG ADA project in Klein Township from July 31st, 2024 to August 31st, 2024. The time extension is to allow proper drying time needed for the epoxy floor system. Approval of a contract with Alfred Venison Company in the amount of $11,250 for engineering services for a street improvement project on West Oak Street, Shenandoah. And finally, approval to advertise for a CBBG ADA project in Core Carbon. Bits will be done via pen bid and must be submitted by 9:00 a.m. Wednesday, July 10th, 2024, at which time they will be opened. Thank you.
All the words, David?
Good morning, commissioners. Several items this morning. I'm here for the approval for Ronnie C. Volk paving, Shoemakersville, Pennsylvania, for $53,950 to pave Second Street parking lot from June 20th, 2024 to December 31st, 2024. Also, I'm here for approval of Haller Lawn and Landscaping, Donaldson, PA, for $16,670 to landscape the front bank of the courthouse. Also, the approval for one-on-deck concrete, Schuylkill Haven, PA, for $32,433 to replace the front steps over at the prison from June 20th, 2024 to December 31st, 2024. Last item is for Advanced Environmental, Fleetwood, Pennsylvania, for $23,335 to install automatic temperature control at the Human Services Building from June 20th, 2024 to December 31st, 2024.
Office of Senior Services.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
I'd like to request an approval for the purchase of agency laptops and desktops from Dell, state contract pricing in the amount of $31,978.35. This has been budgeted and will be paid with state funding, not county funds. Approval of an addendum with Compass Rose Care, LTD of Pottsville, contract number 2023-419 for an increase on the 2023-24 contract for an additional $20,000 for personal care services. The revised contract cap will be $224,000. An approval of an agreement for fiscal year 23-24 to transfer American Rescue Plan Support Services funding to Beaver County Office of Aging, Beaver Falls, PA. At the Department of Aging's request, the amount of the transfer of funding will be $40,000. Approval of an addendum to extend the contract fiscal year 23-24 with Dedicated Nursing Associates, Incorporated of Delmont, PA, for personal care services. The rate will increase from 2031 to 2219 per hour, standardizing the rate for all personal care providers, which has been approved by the Department of Aging. The contract cap will remain at $35,217.45, as in prior state fiscal year. Approval of an agreement for fiscal year 23-24 to transfer American Rescue Plan Support Services funding to Experience, Inc. of Warren, PA, which is Warren Forest County's Area Agency on Aging, at the Department of Aging's request. The amount of the transfer of the funding is $7,000. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott, number one. Communications?
Good morning, Scott. Three items for consideration for next week. First one is to enter an agreement with Essential Management Solutions for general consulting services, $12,260 per month, and also project management for $7,000. This is an existing contract, and there is no increase for the last several years to that contract. Second one is a motion to approve a contact addendum, contract addendum with Greens Communications to include the combined maintenance for two additional P-25 radio sites that we just put up, $15,000 a quarter, and to be effective July 1st, 2024 until the end of the contract, and the contract is the 2022-34 contract. And the third item is a motion to request into an MOU memorandum, understanding with Carbon County to develop a regional communication system sharing the Schuylkill County P-25 radio system. They're applying for some monies with the state, so. The two sites, Scott, where are they? Higgins and Hazleton. That's right, okay. Thank you. They, they come out of warranty. Right. Yeah. Thanks. Beth?
Hi, I'm Lisa, filling in for Elaine for the mental health office. We're requesting approval of an agreement with Crestwell Brothers in the amount not to exceed $145,524 for renovations for the mental health office at the 410 building. Thank you.
Children and youth?
Good morning. Good morning, Bob.
Good morning. On behalf of children and youth, twelve total items, the first eleven of which have a one-year term period beginning July 1st, 2024 to June 30th, 2024, 2025, my apologies. The first is an agreement with Attorney Karen Riss Miller, Pottsville, Pennsylvania, for solicitor services with a monthly retainer of $2,930.82, and extraordinary expenses at an hourly rate of $100. Next three agreements are fairly similar. First is an agreement with Attorney Thomas J. Campion of Marshallboro, Thornburg, Price and Campion of Pottsville, Pennsylvania, for independent counsel services for dependent, alleged dependent, and formerly dependent youth as appointed by the, by the Schuylkill County Court, with a monthly retainer for said services at $4,216.56, and extraordinary expenses at an hourly rate of $75 per hour. Approval of an agreement with Attorney James G. Conville, Schuylkill Haven, Pennsylvania, for independent counsel services for dependent, alleged dependent, formerly dependent youth as appointed by the Schuylkill County Court, with a monthly retainer for said services at $4,216.56, and extraordinary expenses at an hourly rate of $75. And then together with that, we have an agreement with Attorney Thomas Pelish, Pottsville, Pennsylvania, for independent counsel services for dependent, alleged dependent, formerly dependent youth as appointed by the Schuylkill County Court, with a monthly retainer for said services at $4,216.56, and extraordinary expenses at an hourly rate of $75. Next up, we have an approval of an agreement with Signature Family Services headquartered in West Reading, Pennsylvania, for in-home and community-based prevention, parenting, visitation services with hourly unit rates as follow. Parenting at $74, casework at $73, intensive program at $77, domestic violence at $79, nurturing parenting curriculum at $76. nurturing parenting curriculum at $76, and corollary services at $48. Looking for approval of an agreement with Cornell Abraxas Group, LLC, out of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, for specialized residential services. They offer drug and alcohol treatment for males at $370.76 per diem, for females at $384.65 per diem. South Mountain Shelter Program is at $415.63 per diem. Their secure residential treatment is at $403.26 per diem. And the secure residential treatment program for habitual offenders and sexual offenders is at $543.56 per diem. Requesting approval of an agreement with Pine Brook Family Answers out of Allentown, Pennsylvania, for foster care services with per diem rates as follow. Tier one traditional is at $50.17 per diem. Tier two specialized is at $84.17 per diem. The tier three intensive program is at $100.83 per diem. The tier four short-term placement is at $68.98 per diem. Their tier five medically needy youth program is at $36.35 per diem, and one is offset by separate funding streams. They're requesting approval of an agreement with Pennsylvania Counseling Services Incorporated out of Lebanon, Pennsylvania, for psychosexual evaluations with write-up at a per-unit cost of $750. They also offer individual and family therapy sessions at a per-unit cost of $125, and for polygraphs at a per-unit cost of $425. Looking at an agreement with Presley Ridge out of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, for foster care services with per diem rates as follows. Level one at $58.84, level two at $98.80. Traditional foster care at $76.07, and their CRR host home services are at $97.93 per diem. Finally, they offer a residential program titled Home Places, and that is at $535.12 per diem. Looking for approval of an agreement with Clear Vision Residential Treatment Services Incorporated out of Montgomery, Pennsylvania, for residential treatment services at a per diem rate of $224.49. And we have an agreement with Concern out of Fleetwood, Pennsylvania, for foster care services with per diem rates as follows. Traditional would be at $85.08, intensive foster care at $166.58. The mother-baby program would be at $211.83 per diem. They also offer community-based residential services at a per diem rate of $339.65. And they finally also offer in-home services as follow. Functional family therapy service would be at $46.20 per 15-minute unit, and the intensive behavioral health services written order to authorize said service would be at $36.38 per 30-minute unit. Final item we have today is with an indefinite term. This agreement would not involve any financial transactions, but what it does is allows us to enter an agreement with the state of Minnesota to look at rate sheets that they have negotiated and participate in those same rates that have been negotiated by another state, very similar to options that are available through Co-Stars in Pennsylvania. Essentially, the drug testing laboratory that we work with currently, their contract with Pennsylvania is due to expire. As it turns out, it appears that the option to contract with Minnesota exists, and further, the rates that would stem from that agreement will be, in fact, lower than they are currently. However, that would be an item to present at a future meeting. But the agreement today that we're proposing is with the state of Minnesota, acting through its Commissioner of Administration on behalf of MMCAP Infuse. That's the Minnesota Multi-State Contracting Alliance for Pharmacy. This is for the purpose of public sector group purchasing, and with an indefinite term period, this agreement, as stated, would allow the agency to access rate schedules negotiated by the state of Minnesota, and it is understood that any contracts derived from those vendors would require individual approval from the Board. That's what we have today.
Let me get...
Thank you.
Saltways of recycling?
Good morning Commissioners. We are here requesting approval for the fall cleanup. The fall cleanup will take place among 16 sites. Pottsville Minor'sville Borough, CES Landfill, Jorville Borough, North Mannheim Township, Schuylkill Haven Borough, Wing Township, Porter Township, Pine Grove Township, Tamaka Transfer Station, Ringtown Borough, New Ringle Borough, Monoy City Borough, Branch Township, East Union Township, and Tremont Borough. This year's fall cleanup, accepted item listing includes tires, appliances, and bulky items, and is open to all Schuylkill County residents. It should also be noted that there will be no electronics accepted this year. Fall cleanup will start on September 3rd, 2024 and end on September 14th, 2024. The Department of Environmental Protection will reimburse the county up to 50% for the cost of this event. Advertisements for the event, as well as the Schuylkill County website, will have exact locations provided for each site. We also ask for approval to advertise for bids for the waste tire collection and recycling bits will be open in the Controller's Office, accepted in the Controller's Office until 3:00 p.m. on July 15th, 2024, with bid opening in the Commissioners' Boardroom on Wednesday, July 17th, 2024 at 9:00 a.m. and reported at the work session meeting of the Schuylkill County Commissioners with a tentative bid award at the Board of Commissioners meeting on July 24th, 2024. We also ask approval to advertise for bids for the bulky item collection. Bids will be accepted in the Controller's Office till 3:00 p.m. on July 15th, 2024, with bid opening in Commissioners' Boardroom on Wednesday, July 17th, 2024 at 9:00 a.m. and reported at the work session meeting of the Schuylkill County Commissioners with a tentative bid award at the Board of Commissioners meeting on July 24th, 2024.
Today I'd like to present the Treasurer's Report, ending balance in all accounts,
County Minister?
How do you do?
Okay. All the words, Deanna?
Commissioners, good morning. This morning I have three items. There's two budget adjustments that are listed on your agenda today for the current year, and those budget adjustments have been posted outside the board. I also have a supplemental budget appropriation resolution that I'd like to present. It's number 2024-12, presenting it on behalf of the Office of Senior Services. The dollar amount is for $185,070. This is the net amount. Commissioners, this is in connection with additional funding through their block grant program. They actually received additional funding in the amount of $191,057. However, there was a reduction in the program funding of $5,987. So the net difference of the $185,070 is the amount that we're adjusting their budget for.
Can I have an motion to approve Resolution Number 2024-12?
Make a motion to approve the request of Senior Services.
Second.
What question?
Commissioner Kudrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Good morning Commissioners. One item today, children need the appointment of Belinda Yordi as a court type is two, the rate is 16.1825, effective 7/15/24, and is per the union contract. All appointments are pending drug tests and physical appropriate. All actions involving salary or propositions being created are pending salary warning.
Just other business, I want to say last night we were able to attend the United Way Football Challenge. I think they said they had 660 participants from all 14 school districts. That thing, it was a great event. It's my first time going to it. It was a real neat event, you know, to see all those people participate and all the agencies that worked together to do it. It was just really... And to see, you know, even though rival teams, they were turning each other on, it was just, it's a really nice event. And it's one of the positive things here that I just wanted to talk about. Carrie Boots, the same thing.
The money it's used for is to provide nurses' batteries for hygiene products. Pop artists, if somebody could come to school, Montgomery. And that last year was 28 grand, this was 33,500. So everything, like I said, every school district participated in the county with a great, great to see that, all young people there.
Again, it's from even last week when we had the young people there getting those awards. It shows that, you know, our young leadership is out there doing things for other community service organizations, and especially United Way. They have definitely many agencies that touch a lot of people that really need some help at different times. Definitely, they've gone a long way, especially in that heat. It was hot, but they battled out the chore up there, and it was a good event. I got to give it to Dr. Smart Panic and other people that put that idea together many, many years ago. And I remember the first one in Schuylkill Haven. I think it might have had four teams and very few athletes, and now grew to 600 and some in every school in the county. So it shows the strength of what Schuylkill County can do and give to others.
The salary board was at the Ammonore School graduates, so my district, I ran third. Larry, Gary lives in Schuylkill Haven, they were number two, and you were...
Blue Mountains, came in first. But not Tamaka and Blue Mountain. I don't mean Tamaka.
We had nothing to do with that, either. We didn't do the scores.
They did it on their own.
So can I have most do a journey? Salary board, the board of the executive sessions?
There were none, hell.
Public comment?
Melinda Dibber, North Mannheim Township. Okay, this does touch on salary board. I am curious as to how many employees in the county, whether they be just regular employees, elected officials, appointed officials, have the unfettered use of a county vehicle and gasoline at the taxpayer's expense? Do we know, kind of like off the top of our heads, how many people in the county have use? Because even though technically it's not written in as part of their salary, it's definitely a big old fringe benefit. I think we can all agree, based on the price of gasoline right now per gallon, and I guess there's probably what? How many employees, would you say, have the use of a vehicle that they can drive back and forth to work every day and not have to pay for gas or insurance or all of that out of their own pocket? So ballpark it. What would you say, Larry? 10, 15, 20, 50?
I have no idea.
100? Okay.
Can I give you an honest answer?
Many different...
I know we don't. I've never seen any of us drive. There's no elected official that I know that drives. None of us, us three of us, because I've never tried to pay for gas for my truck.
George did, he had the Durango.
Well, that was George.
Okay. But that would be something, if I submit a right-to-know request, I should be able to get that information, or am I going to be stonewalled on it? And Sharon, you keep all the deeds and titles and all that stuff in your office, right?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thanks. Have you ever done an audit on the county vehicles?
No.
Okay.
I know where, I know where all the county vehicles are.
Never conducted an audit, like pulled vehicle mileage logs or anything like that? Okay, okay, thank you for that. Also, I'm wondering why designated contracts are being approved at a work session meeting. So on June 5th, we had designated contracts that were approved at that work session meeting instead of being approved at the board meeting. And I thought we were trying to get away from that. Why did that occur?
We're trying to get away from it, but there is certain circumstances where it's time-sensitive, but they have to be done, because they have to be paid.
Okay, and again, on that one, the June 5th one, Richard Heatherington, even though it was a vendor-designate contract, to be paid for services rendered, absolutely, Boots. That is a first-degree relative for you. I think you said it was your brother?
Yes, my brother.
Right? Okay. First-degree relative, so just like Ann Dudish, as recorder of deeds, should not have voted on her own brother's salary as we got an ethics opinion on that, that she was incorrect in doing that. Same thing applies, Boots. You have to abstain and not vote on that. And you did vote on it, right?
I wanted to approve all the contracts, yes.
Okay, gotcha. Thanks.
Oh, Linda, did you ever do an audit?
Yes, I did.
Yep, maybe I can find it then. Okay, because they are all on fixed assets. Yep, yes, I did.
Are the other public comments on your board?
Talked it into it.
I might as well put it on record, because I do every week, and I don't get any answers. Dr. Uncle Palo Alto, Ken Hatter, receiving a salary to work from home. What's the status of that? You said it was an outside source doing investigation. There's no updates. So three and a half months now, he's paid for work from home, still interacts with people in the courthouse, was in the office last week with a briefcase. Is there a suspension? Is there an investigation? I don't understand how these investigations go on so long with the county. You hire a company, of course, an outside source and consultant, you're going to pay them five, six figures to do an investigation. It's pretty much cut and dry. I mean, just read the court documents. But you're going to pay them and still pay him to work from home, increase the workload for everybody here, have him be able to communicate with people there, and then he comes into your office on Friday. Do you have any updates?
That's not going to be an investigation. I don't like to hear that. It's a personnel matter.
So nobody can expedite this investigation. I mean, this is... And as far as the interns go, one not being advertised, one being advertised, backdoor deals like there always is here. The last paid intern prior to the Ms. Garrity that I exposed at the one meeting was Mr. Opake's child. All interns in between there were unpaid. You see a little red flag there? Was Mr. Opake's child advertised? Was that position advertised? Because one of the ones that Melinda just read off was a district attorney that wasn't paid. But then if you go back, Opake's child was paid. So if that office doesn't advertise it, or doesn't pay, then how did he get paid? Mr. Grudy, I believe he has a lot of ones that come in that are unpaid. The workload for them at that front door and the stuff that they have to deal with should most certainly be paid. But then again, they don't get paid a lot to do what they do. So I'd like to know what the process is. I have a right-to-know pending with this, because I know I won't get any answers here. But what is the process as far as who's paid, who's unpaid? How do you go about it? And how are the only, the last two that we know about, out of the last 15 or 20, are immediate relatives of an employee or an elected official from the county? And everybody else gets kicked in the ass, and they don't get a dime. I mean, but they're here working. So I'd like to know the logical, let me know.
Prior to Abigail Garrity, we did have another paid intern.
When was that, you know?
A few months back.
Two months back?
No, a few months. I'm trying to think in my head. I don't...
Not since January, because I've gone back and pulled all the parts since January, and every single, every other intern has been unpaid, except for Abigail Garrity has been unpaid since January of 2024.
It was through a contract through the Commonwealth University, and she was a paid intern.
So we don't have to report that at the county?
We did, we did.
Yep, not on the par. Absolutely not. I guarantee, I've gone back and checked every single one of them, unless it was left off intentionally.
Commissioners, from the Treasurer's Office, I've had paid interns from 2016 when I took office to 2022, and they were a paid internship to come in for 30 hours a week for six weeks during doe season. And my procedure was to put it on my prior year's budget to ask for a temporary part-time per diem, whatever the terminology is. So I had a paid intern in my office, and as an elected official, I would put the feelers out there to see if anybody was looking for a job. Typically, it was somebody who graduated from high school, not yet in college. And again, for $12 an hour, six weeks, they were making about $4,000 as a summer job. So I did have paid interns in the Treasurer's Office that I can speak to that I know of during my tenure.
But they were not labeled as paid... But they were not labeled as paid interns, correct? They were labeled as a part-time, temporary per diem employee, right?
I don't remember the terminology, Melinda, but I knew it was a part-time position.
Okay, all right, we can go back and check. You said two thousand and sixteen to twenty twenty-two.
Two thousand and sixteen to twenty twenty-two, and I know my criticism, Jackie, had done that before me, but I can tell you what I've done from two thousand and sixteen to the present and stuff.
Okay, we need to be consistent on some of this stuff. So people trying to skirt under the law, county law, quote unquote, and call it something else to get away from, and I guess, you know, if Heather had been smart, she would have done the same thing for her daughter and called it a temporary per diem, part-time position or whatever, versus a paid intern, because that is blatant. That's blatant. When you have seven other kids who are coming in and busting their butts.
Melinda, you're trying to. So can we move on with the meeting now, please? I'm going to look into it. I know our policy is put internships.
But Larry, you should be aware of this.
I know, Larry.
Before you vote, before you vote.
Because I don't think it's an issue that she's down there. I'm sorry, she's a high school kid, she's a legal agent.
But why are you upset and not being paid?
Listen, she applied. I don't know. If that's the terminology and they applied for that, don't they have some self-responsibility? If you're, if I'm a kid, anytime I work for a job, I went in, first I asked is, how much pay them? If they applied for an unpaid internship, or however it's worth it, it's their choice.
If that position has not been advertised, how are people supposed to know about it? How are other high school or even college-aged kids supposed to know about those positions?
How did the other ones find out about the other unpaid internships? If they're not advertised?
Well.
They have to be somewhere.
They're not getting paid. Oh, my God, big difference. Larry, big difference.
I don't think it's an issue, but I'll look into it.
It is an issue.
So I want to move on to the meeting, okay? Thank you. So, human resources.
We have them.
Okay. Any new business? No, sir. Thank you.
Yes, yes. Okay, I'll stay. Appreciate it.